Simonus can lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That being said, I'm your town moderator, Mike Finnegan. Of course, we have Castleton's Alan Slocum and our town manager, Michael Jones. I'd like to take this time to thank Castleton, Vermont State University, for providing the facilities for us and the audio visual. And of course, we have folks on visiting, we have Zoom message and they can relay questions. Also, for everybody, if you have a question, please convey your question to me and I will route it to the proper person, hopefully, who can find the answer. That being said, let's move to article number one.
Mike, can you speak into the microphone or hold the microphone when you talk?
The handheld ones on the table. On the table.
All right. Thanks again to Vermont State University Castleton for providing the facilities and assistance, of course. Okay. Let's start with article number one. Shall the town elect offices to the following terms: two select board members for one year, one select board member for two years, one library trustee for five years, one library trustee for two years, remaining of a five-year term, one constable for two years, and one town moderator for one year. Any questions, comments, concerns on article number one? Just a quick note of article number one, you may not see my name under town moderator, but if you really like me and want me to continue in this role, you can feel free to write me in. This is the selfless plug, thank you. Okay. No, because I didn't get the signatures in on time, that's the real issue. All right. Moving on. Article number two. Shall the town appropriate a sum of $29,406 for legislating? Any questions on article number two? Hearing none, seeing none, let's move to article number three. Shall the town appropriate the sum of $2,224 for ordinances and proceedings? Questions, comments, concerns on article number two? Okay. Moving on. Yes? Article number two for ordinances and proceedings. I'll defer that one to town manager, Mike Jones. So ordinance proceedings, some of it has to do with training of our personnel, like the animal control officer, the tree warden if they need it, but majority of it is printing of town reports. Any other questions for article number three? Hearing none. Moving on to article number four. Shall the town appropriate the sum of $201,757 for managing municipalities? Any questions on article four? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll move to article number five. Shall the town appropriate the sum of $13,165 for conducting elections? Any questions, discussion on article number five? Article six. Shall the town appropriate the sum of $50,086 for collection, custody, and disbursement of funds? Concerns on article number six? Article seven. Shall the town appropriate the sum of $121,752 for accounting? Any questions on article number seven? Hearing none, seeing none. Article number eight. Shall the town appropriate the sum of $19,000 for auditing? Any questions, comments, concerns on article number eight? Okay, moving right along. Article number nine. Shall the town appropriate the sum of $41,568 for tax listing? Any questions, comments, concerns on article number nine? Article 10. Shall the town appropriate the sum of $47,121 for tax collecting? Any questions on article number 10? Hearing none, seeing none, move to article 11. Shall the town appropriate the sum of $10393 for document recording issued? Any questions on article 11?
Yes, moderator, could that be explained to us exactly what those, that sum is used for?
Document recording. Do we have a select board member that would like to chime in on this?
Yeah.
Mary, you need to identify yourself.
Yes.
Oh, Mary McIntyre.
Thank you.
The majority of that is the town clerk and the assistant town clerk, and their salary and health benefits, office supplies, stuff to do with that nature. Does that explain it a little better, Mary, or?
Sure, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions, concerns on article 11? Move on to article 12. Shall the town appropriate the sum of $27,000 for legal services? Any questions, comments, concerns for article 12? Article 13. Shall the town appropriate the sum of $51,758 for municipal planning and zoning? Any questions, comments, concerns for article 13? Moving on. Article 14. Shall the town appropriate the sum of $1,700 for community development and economic revitalization? Any questions, comments, concerns on article 14? Hearing none, seeing none. Article 15. Shall the town appropriate the sum of $280,245 for general government buildings? Any questions, comments, concerns on article 15? Mike Jones.
If you don't know, let's all look together. The town buildings are the town office, the fire station, police station, and the
and Castleton Village School. So those are the three buildings that are part of that big lump sum number. So if any, I don't know if anybody has some questions on that, but that's what it, that's what it's for.
There's a question in the chat.
Go ahead.
From Melanie Coombs. How much of that is related to the Castleton Village School?
15.
It's on page seven.
The total for the Castleton Village School will be $88,500.
Very good. Any other questions, concerns? Oh. Thank you. Joe Mark.
The, Joe Mark, the budget sheet that was in the town report and the one that was outside, is working? It indicates that it's for the 2024-2025 year. That has the is that for 20, I see it's proposed budget 25-26. I think, I think I understand. Thank you.
Very good.
Never mind.
Any other questions, comments for article 15? Hearing none, seeing none, let's move to article 16. Shall the town appropriate the sum of $33,200 for general government equipment? Any questions about article 16? Hearing none, seeing none. We'll move to article 17. Shall the town appropriate the sum of $713,175 for the police department? Any questions, comments, concerns on article 17?
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment? Yes. Should we ask the moderator?
Mr. Moderator. You have the floor. I know nobody has any comments, but on the street, this is a question that I get a lot, that people say, I think the police budget has gotten high. It's higher than it used to be, but I've done some comparisons that I think are important. Other communities that have the same or very similar population to ours, around 4,500, Heinsburg, their police budget is 815,000. Newport, 1,909,000. And Stowe, 1,939,000. So if you take our budget of 713,000, it's about $160 per capita for every citizen in Castleton. Montpelier has a per capita police charge of $450, more than double hours. Stowe is 437. Windsor is 351. So I think that people would agree, we have an excellent police department in town, and it's quite reasonable. I know that 700,000 looks like a lot of money, but if you compare it to what police coverage costs other communities, it's very, very reasonable.
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion for article 17?
Ted, Ted, Dan, thank you for the police.
Okay. Andrew Bentley.
Regarding the, did I read there were increased patrols? Or there going to be increased patrols regarding the thefts and so forth? And will those patrols be indicative of the budget we're looking at now? Or we'll have to be aware that that's coming down the line? Thank you.
Very good question, Andrew. So as a lot of you know, we've had a lot of press in the last month to six weeks with the car. Cars being unlocked, keys in there, cars getting stolen. So we have increased our patrols to 24 hours right now. So it's taxing our department, but that's something the board knows, we discussed it. But so far, it's been successful. But it's, and the other thing I want to make a note, and I thank Mark Brown for bringing that stuff out. This is, that's based on non-24-hour coverage. Because
That's why I'm asking.
Yes. That's, that's based on that. All those other departments he mentioned are all 24-hour coverage. So, and that's something, that's something, you know, we do, I have, I have really good officers. They're diligent. They're well-trained. And if you ever met, if you haven't met some of the newer ones I have, you need to go out there and, you know, meet them, stop by. Thank you. Follow-up to that, chief?
If continuation, do you think there's any likelihood that we're going to need to continue that? And what kind of expense might you think where that could head?
Well, that's something the board, the board and myself will discuss if we get to that point. It's obvious, it's all about money. And all, and obviously, you'd have, whether you would hire another full-timer to pick up the other full-time shift like that, or you just augment it with other part-timers, but that's hard. But that's something that the board would have to make that decision, and obviously, the community would, if they'd ever want to decide in a separate vote for 24-hour coverage. Thank you. Any other questions regarding article 17? Hearing none, seeing none, let's move to article 18. Shall the town appropriate the sum of $43,482 for emergency medical services? This includes regional ambulance service and Castleton first responders. Any thoughts, questions, concerns on article 18? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll move to article 19. Shall the town appropriate the sum of $262,785 for the fire department? Any questions, comments, concerns regarding article 19? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll move on to article 20. Shall the town appropriate the sum of $6,850 for emergency management? Any questions, comments, concerns regarding article 20? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll move to article 21. Shall the town appropriate the sum of $1,506,709 for the highway department? Any questions, comments, concerns regarding article 21? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll move to article 22. Shall the town appropriate the sum of $30,046 for town lands? Any questions, comments, concerns about article 22? Moving right along to article 23. Shall the town appropriate the sum of $5,000 for historical cemeteries? Any questions, comments, concerns on article 23? Jen, we have a Zoom question?
I have several. Melanie Coombs asks, what is budgeted for reserve highway?
The amount budgeted the amount budgeted for this year, for this coming fiscal year is $110,000 for reserve. It's up from $100,000 from last fiscal year. And as you'll see, if you look later on in the evening, we're going to be discussing increasing that reserve account even more. But at this point, we're proposing in the budget, a 10,000 or a 10% increase in the reserve account for highway vehicles.
And a question, going back to a previous article, from John Burke. Village school appears to be 40% of town building. I believe that the town office is the police and fire building, the town garage are also grouped here. Are there other buildings included in this item?
That is back for article 15, correct, is that? Government buildings, article 15.
The, the town highway garage isn't part of that. It's the Castleton Village School, the town office, the public safety building. Those, those three are it.
And then last question so far. Melanie Coombs asks, how much is budgeted for the fire department reserve?
This year's proposed budget is level fund, or level to $106,000 for, for vehicles and $18,000 for, it's a bunch of different kinds of equipment. Air packs, ice water rescue, confined space rescue, explication tools, all of which are going to be quite expensive when they need to be replaced, which is why we created that reserve account, with about three years ago, Mike, or two? Two years ago. And last year was the first year that we contributed $18,000 to that, and we're going to continue to do that. So between the two, we're looking at $132,000. And that also, there's a separate article later on in the evening that we'll be discussing for increasing the capital reserve account for the fire department as well. And that's for the, the future cost of apparatus, fire engines.
Just to speak to comparables on our highway department budget, they were a little harder to come by, but Newport and Stowe, again, are comparable populations. Our highway budget, 1,506,000. Newport's is about 200,000 more than that, and Stowe is 1,750,000. So again, for communities in that 4,500 population, we're keeping this budget really tight. I know nobody has an appetite to see their taxes increased this year, so I know it's a big number, but it's what it costs to plow the roads and maintain them. And, and we're keeping it at a reasonable amount compared to other communities of similar size. Any other questions, comments, concerns? We're still at article 21 regarding highway department. Any other questions, comments? Mike Jones.
Mr. Mayor, you can probably hear me, I'll just
You need to use the microphone for
Oh, yell!
The Zoom people can't hear you.
Now I forgot what I was gonna say. Oh, so the town of Castleton is the second largest community in Rutland County. We have the second largest or greater, greatest number of roads to maintain as well. So it's not just the size of the population. The highway department, obviously, is our, is the keepers of our roads, and we have the second largest mile, number of miles of road in the community as well.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Mary McIntyre.
Mary McIntyre, while you're speaking about the highway department, can you give us an update on, on the equipment? You've nicely told us over Facebook and other social media that the, you were having issues with trucks. But what's the status of them now? How are, how are you doing with the truck repair? Because I know many of them were down, and there were some concerns over slowness of some of the town roads being closed. But it was clear, you had posted that we were having equipment issues. So how are we doing with that?
Thanks for letting me drag out this meeting, Mary. So there we are. We do have some issues with, with our plow trucks. Maintenance-wise, one of them's really tender, as far as rotting goes. And we're trying to make the repairs the most economically feasible as possible, but getting parts has been a real big issue. And then, majority of it's parts. There's one manufacturer that we can get these parts from, and when they don't have it, we're, we're waiting. So we've been down to three trucks. Two, two large trucks, a tandem and a single axle, and a one-ton Dodge Ram that we've been So if you have no complaints about the condition of your roads, thank the highway group, because that means they've been out there with less vehicles than we normally have to keep the roads clear for everyone. So they're trying to get out ahead of it. I got a visit from one the other day, said, I'm 63 years old, and this is whooping me. Because they're, they're just pulling a lot of hours on this to get out there and do this. So I, I appreciate the, the long hours they put in, but we're slowly making progress on the parts. And I'm not really sure if we're going to have them all running by, by the end of winter, but we're trying.
Thank you. I just thought it would be helpful if people, although it was posted, people understood that it is an equipment issue that you don't have control over. Thank you.
Any other questions for article 21?
And we do have two new plow trucks that will be online.
I'm sorry. We do have two new plow trucks that will be online for next plow season. It's a long, long, arduous process now to get new equipment, whether it's a plow truck or a fire truck. It's no longer a 60, 90, 180-day process. So we are a little off the back on that, but we're going to be in much, much better shape going into next plow season. Do you still have the microphone? I would like the town manager to speak to the, having trouble finding help, like all the other places. Would you speak to that, or would you okay with that? And get, and having the help with proper credentials? Thanks, Bob, for throwing me under the bus. We, we have some problems, obviously, with the maintenance of the equipment, but we also have, we've been trying to fill vacancies for close to a year. We've had lots of applicants, but not a lot of qualified applicants. And so our mechanic is also trying to help out as much as possible, plowing, but he wants to go back over into the highway crew, so there's, creates a vacancy for a mechanic. And we have not been able to hire a mechanic. So if anybody is a mechanic, knows a mechanic, wants to work for the town of Castleton, come talk to me after. But it's, wages are another big issue that we deal with, is, you know, to pay somebody with a CDL, a commercial driver's license, they're commanding $25 plus an hour. And as we negotiate union contracts, we try to keep ahead of it, but I think we're, we're a little bit behind. That's what, that's what the, that's what's commanded. It's not what, it's not, I guess, what we really want, but we like to pay less, but we also need to hire good employees and keep good employees. And the cost of hiring is just going through the roof. So we, we're managing it, and we're tiring people out, and we'll make it this winter, and hopefully, have better news for those folks next year. Any other comments, concerns on article 21? I can tell you for sure, equipment-wise, and I know Chief Gaiet can chime in on this too, it's a three-year turnaround from a time you order a fire engine until it arrives. It's now three years to wait to go. Okay. Moving on. Article 22. Shall the town appropriate the sum of $30,046 for town lands? Any questions, comments, concerns regarding article 22? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll go to article 23. Shall the town appropriate the sum of $5,000 for historical cemeteries? Any questions, comments, concerns on article 23? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll move to article 24. Shall the town appropriate the sum of $31,000 for Hillside Cemetery? Any questions, comments, concerns regarding article 24? Moving right along to article 25. Shall the town appropriate the sum of $1,373 for health, regulating, and inspecting? Any questions on article 25? Article 26. Shall the town appropriate the sum of $6,585 for animal control? Any questions, comments, concerns regarding article 26?
Joan Brown. Who is our animal control officer right now?
Who is our animal control officer right now? Mike Alexander. Joe Mark.
I just wanted, I've said this at past town meetings. I think we take for granted the fact that Jim Leamy has been our health officer for scores of years, half a century, I think it is now. I think it is now. And, uh, he does that for free, and when he decides to cash it in, uh, we're gonna have to adjust this budget. For retirement.
He's only ninety-one, ninety-two. He's got a few years left.
Any other questions regarding Article twenty-six? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll move to Article twenty-seven. Shall the town appropriate the sum of one thousand dollars for the constable? I hope there's plenty of comments, concerns about this. Keith Mangella. Yes, and I, I want to have Cy Luma stand up. Fifty-three years he's doing, he's retiring this year.
And I'm sure everybody here, uh, can tell a story about Cy. Uh, I've known him not as long as some of you, but I've known him for close to thirty years, um, back in the Brandon days, and, um, I've really appreciated, uh, his knowledge for the community. He knew everybody. He kinda sat me in place, guided me, and then, um, here we are. Thank you, Cy.
Joe Mark.
That's, uh, gives me an invitation to say something about Cy as well. Uh, in nineteen seventy-five, fifty years ago, uh, Cy led Mike Canty and Mike Gallagher on a sixty-four mile run around Rutland and Addison County. Uh, that was a recreation of an event that happened in seventeen seventy-five, when Ethan Allen directed a guy by the name of Major Beach to run that distance to rouse the troops. And, uh, I hope you can participate in the twenty-twenty-five reenactment, Cy.
You mean, you mean running?
Maybe on my motorcycle, right?
Will stay. Thank you.
Yes. And I think something that needs mentioning here, and I'll step off, off role here as moderator, we all remember the tragic events at Sandy Hook Elementary in Connecticut several years ago with a random shooter in an elementary school. The following weeks after that, any parent of an elementary school age child was scared to death to drop their children off at school, fearing that their worst nightmare may come true. Here in the town of Castleton, what happens? Who's at the elementary school every day? That guy. He wasn't asked, he wasn't paid, yet he was. That's community policing at its finest. Thank you. Let's move on. Article twenty-eight. Shall the town appropriate the sum of three hundred eighty-three thousand and seventy-six dollars for the transfer station? Any questions, comments, concerns on Article twenty-eight? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll move to Article twenty-nine. Shall the town appropriate the sum of one hundred ninety-five thousand forty-eight dollars for recreation? Any questions, comments, concerns regarding Article twenty-nine? Mark Brown.
Um, because of state regulations, we can't list this on the ballot, but, uh, that sum is less anticipated revenue of approximately seventy thousand dollars.
Any questions, comments, concerns regarding Article twenty-nine? Yes.
Andy Vermilier, uh, I just wanna speak to support our community and how awesome it's been actually this last year around recreation, and I really feel like it's, it's really brought our community together as kind of like a centerpiece. Um, the last six months, we've offered over forty different kinds of recreation programs, and I say recreation in quotes, meaning everything from crafts to wellness to really just community events. Um, the number of volunteers that have participated in this is in the dozens. Um, we're doing fundraising, I should just say, uh, I'm also speaking as the president of the Friends of Castleton Parts and Recreation, which is a not-for-profit group that is trying to fundraise and promote recreation for all, all ages in our community. Um, we've had successful fundraisers over the, the, the last year where we've had a turkey trot that brought in over a hundred people. Um, we've had an annual fund where we're trying to raise money for a new gym floor in the recreation building, and I'm just gonna say it's a really exciting time to be a part of, uh, this community and recreation, and I wanna thank all the people that have supported recreation to date. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mary Droge, and I'm going to speak very briefly, uh, about the Castleton Recreation Commission. Martha Clifford is our chair, and she is out of town. Um, the Castleton Recreation Commission, volunteers appointed by the select board have been organizing youth sports, managing Crystal Beach and our town ball fields for over three decades. But just last year, the bylaws were updated in light of all the changes at recreation to focus on developing policy and writing long and short-term plans. So this year, we are actively working on recreation's first ever one-year plan, and then we'll go to a five-year plan that's more vision-oriented. Um, and then, in addition, we are writing and recommending policy for the department. We have vacancies, and we're actively seeking members. The Rec Commission seeks to be inclusive of all Castleton residents. Um, we're committed to open dialogue so we can create public spaces and activities that benefit the entire community. So if you're interested, you can contact Martha Clifford or myself after this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding Article twenty-nine?
Mr. Spalding?
Mr. Spalding, go ahead.
Or you can ask him, Ryan, if you want. I was gonna make a statement, so you go ahead. You can make the statement very quick.
And I don't know if I should direct this question to John Alexander or the Rec Commission. How close are we to that seventy thousand in revenue this year? Any idea?
I do not have any idea how close.
Okay. And I know that seventy thousand is proposed for next year, but I would just wondering, are we halfway there? We're nine months into the year, or eight months.
I do not know how close we are to the figure of seventy thousand dollars, and revenue right off the top of my head, no, I do not know.
Okay. I'm gonna still be on your case about that.
I anticipate so.
I would like to speak, uh, quickly about the Rec Center to people that may not have been involved in it yet, but Castleton has a truly unique opportunity here where we have the former village school, um, a pretty good building right in our, the downtown of our village. Um, it would cost millions of dollars for us to recreate that from scratch, and we own the building. We bought it for a dollar. So between the Recreation Commission and the Friends of Rec, they have, uh, been working really hard to come up, and the Recreation Director, to come up with programming that would benefit the entire community. Uh, starting with programs for preschool kids so they can learn to socialize at a very young age in a positive environment. Maybe more importantly, it gives an opportunity for the parents and grandparents that bring those preschool kids to get out of their homes and socialize and make friends within the community. I don't wanna go down the rabbit hole of how isolated people are in the COVID post-hangover, but we all know that that's a community problem, and this is solving it. We have, uh, picked up some programs that used to be done by the school, that the schools gave up, uh, certain age basketball, so our younger kids get an opportunity to, uh, play games, do crafts, do, uh, different activities at the school in a positive environment with good coaches and volunteers. You know, I'm not gonna, uh, all these rabbit holes, I'm not gonna go down, but I will. Everybody knows the problems our country has had with, uh, drugs in recent years, and I'm not saying the, the Rec Center can solve that, but I think if you change the culture, you can change the outcome. And this is changing the culture of what people do in a small community. To have a public space where people get together and socialize, older people learn from younger people, younger people learn from older people, is community interaction in a really positive way. There's programs, uh, indoor walking programs for more mature folks, uh, pickleball that has groups of men, women, uh, married couples. There's been, uh, some programs put on by the Rutland Mint, uh, the horticulture program going on right now. The only programs that we don't have yet are the ones that you haven't thought of. And for this to work, it means everybody has to do it. I don't have the blueprint to make this work, neither does Andy or Mary or anybody else here, but together, as a community, we do have the blueprint to make this work. So I'm really encouraging, asking everyone to get involved in the Recreation Center for your own benefit, for the benefit of our community. Um, it's a great resource, it's a wonderful opportunity, but it only works if we all get involved. So please come out and get involved.
Mary.
Mary McIntyre, um, I am the vice president of Friends of Castleton Parts and Recreation, um, and very involved in the in-building activities. One of the things that we need to get used to in this town is going home and saying, "Oh, there's nothing to do in this town." Because there is. Um, we're working hard on getting a calendar together so that people can get, change their habits, and look at the calendar Sunday night and say, "Oh, what can I do this week?" And see that at our Rec Center or in the community, there are activities to do Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday night, rather than sit at home in front of the TV, um, all by yourself, or in front of the, the, uh, computer flipping through whatever social media. You can come out and be personable and get to know people in town and, um, and your neighbors. Uh, we've run pickleball here now in town for, um, over two years, and the number of people that we have connected, um, is just so heartwarming. And our area businesses are also benefiting because people are going out for a bite to eat after recreating. Um, we've got, uh, one business in town that is, uh, offering specials for the month of February and donating one dollar of each special to Friends of Rec. Um, it promotes their business, it promotes us and, and helps support us. So our recreation facility has just added so much to our community, and as Mark said, if you can think of it together, we can build it. Um, so please come on out and, uh, join us.
Okay. Moving on to Article thirty. Shall the town appropriate the sum of fifteen thousand two hundred dollars for Memorial Day decorations in July, fourth parade, and fireworks? Any questions, comments regarding Article thirty? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll move to Article thirty-one. Shall the town appropriate the sum of one hundred thirty-one thousand seven hundred thirty-eight dollars for library administration? Any questions, comments, concerns regarding Article thirty-one? Do you have a Zoom question?
Yes, Melanie, Melanie Coom asks, "Why the large thirteen thousand-plus increase for the library?"
All right, worry.
Could you repeat the question?
I think the question was, "Why is there a thirteen thousand dollar increase from last year's appropriation?" Is that correct? No, this, go ahead.
Why don't you speak to that? Mrs. Mark is the chairman of the, uh, library.
Board.
Board.
Yes, go ahead.
And she can answer this better.
Hello, thank you for your question. Uh, we have, um, increased our expenses thanks to something that we worked very hard to do, which was to raise all the money, nine hundred thousand dollars for an elevator, handicap access, in addition to the library, and a little more space, wonderful paths and, and safe access. But we have to maintain that in a very safe, secure way as well. So we have, um, we have alarm calls that we have to monitor to the fire department should there be, um, an issue or problems, somebody's stuck. We have repairs, uh, we built in some repairs, I hope we don't have to have one, but if we did, uh, one visit is twenty-five hundred dollars. Also, given that we have enhanced and increased, uh, space in this town building, the, uh, insurance is, has doubled for us. Fair enough, but, uh, that, that's one of the kinds of expenses that we are incurring. We also have added two hours a week to our library director's time, and I want to just say, I think she's well worth it if you come to the library. She is always busy, and she's always there to answer any kind of questions. And I, I'm happy to say more about the library, more.
Please, please do.
Invited to do that, and I'll try to, I'm sure.
Folks online are just saying they cannot hear you, so I don't know.
Oh, can you hear me now?
There you go.
Oh, all right. Well, our library, this library, your library, uh, opened its doors in nineteen twenty-nine, and I'm sure it was a very busy place then, but it is an extraordinarily busy place now, with a lot of enhancements that I don't think they had in nineteen twenty-nine. I wasn't quite born in nineteen twenty-nine, but, uh, the Wi-Fi access, all of that is free, use of our computers, everything that, you know, accommodates any person, including our access to the library. We have children's programs, adult programs, adult programs are often at night at very interesting topics. We just had Dennis Jensen, one of our town, uh, residents, did, did a, a speech, a little presentation the other night, children's programs that are centered around literacy, and, uh, 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 this is a center, I'm gonna build on what Andy said and others have said, Mary, about this being a community center. It really is. And please come, if you, I, I hope most of you have come, as I look around, I, I hope so, but please come at any time. It's, it's your library, and our librarians are there to answer any questions, and they really are very welcoming, and they might even help you, you know, with your cell phone access. They're very clever. So I thank you for this opportunity, and I wanna invite, saying, if you have any questions or there's anything that you would like to see at our library that is not already in place, please let our librarians know, Mary Kearns, Pam Arrow, any board member, we really invite you for your input. So thank you for your support all these years. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and I wanna thank you and your trustees and Mary Kearns and her team. Um, what people may not realize is the library is a piece of town property, but all the work that goes into it and the almost a million dollars' worth of grants and the money that, they don't ask the town, um, to anything for that. Uh, it's all your team, and people don't, probably don't realize that, all the, all the effort that went into revitalizing that place. Um, and there's still some work to do, and I know you guys are on the path for more grants, so we welcome that, but your team has done a great job, and I think that's, people, it's probably underappreciated because people don't know it. So thank you.
So, thank you.
Yes, Mark Brown.
One more thing I'd like to mention about the library. Mrs. Mark did touch on it, that we have an extremely dynamic library director. She's really, really helpful. I think she's read every book ever written, from Deustavesti to the comics yesterday. And she can discuss them and help you find books that would be of interest to you. If you haven't been there, please go. If you're hesitant to, at least look at their website. You'll be so impressed that you will go. They have a wonderful website, they list all the programs that they have for people of different ages, a tremendous number of children's programs. They're really dedicated to trying to get the younger kids to read and be interested in books, and that's super important. So, please, if you don't do anything else, look at the Castleton Library website.
Mary McIntyre, I'd just like to express the gratitude to all the library's volunteers. Mary Kearns and Pam lead a wonderful group of volunteers at that library, and they put in many hours. And at our rec center, that's what I'm, I've been pushing for us to do, is follow them as the mentors that they all are, and develop a very similar program, because although they do have the two paid positions there, they really are supported by a group of very willing and dedicated volunteers that put in many hours and do many tasks. So, hopefully, we can do that at our rec center as well. And the rec center and the library just complement one another. With this opportunity, after the children's story hour, now there is movement activities after they've sat for an hour or so, then they go over to the rec center, and they do movement somewhat based on the books that they've just read. And they have a lot of fun with that, and it's just so complimentary. Also, if any of you came out for the Christmas celebration that we had, I was there for numerous hours, supporting Rec and promoting Rec, and the college students that came into that library and did crafts and had snacks, and mingled with so many of our townsfolk, and young parents that came from out of town, expressing the gratitude to come into our little town, because their town, you have to pay for different programs, and ours are free. And they just rave about the quality of the programming that we have. So, we are really blessed, and thank you all so much involved with the library. Thank you.
Moving on, unless we've got some more concerns, questions about Article 31, let's move to Article 32. Shall the town appropriate the sum of $1,884 for prevention and control of forest fires? Any questions, comments, concerns regarding Article 32? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll move to Article 33. Shall the town appropriate the sum of $12,183 for the tree warden? Any questions, comments, concerns regarding Article 33? Mike Jones.
So, our tree warden is here, Scott Welch, in the back. Raise your hand, Scott, please, or stand up. So, Scott does a lot more than just trimming the crab apple trees on Main Street. He is a huge part of our, helping of our Highway Department. We've, the Select Board's been really great about giving us more money through ARPA funds, the American Rescue Plan Act money, to get these dead and dying trees from away from our road sides that are threatening or menacing to both motorists or pedestrians, bikers. So, thank you, Scott. You do more than just Main Street apple tree trimming, and I don't know if people realize how much you're out there helping the Highway Department and the Rec Department, so thank you.
If I could, as moderator, perhaps have a question for the tree warden. We've all heard about the incoming onset of the Emerald Ash Bore Beetle with ash trees. Have you seen any of this? And there was a front porch forum post that some folks have seen it up on the lake. What are your thoughts on this, Scott?
It is in our neighborhood, which it is in a lot more places than we're led on to. So, what's going to happen to them? Yeah, it's going to be something that's going to sweep through, and it's going to take whatever trees it takes, and what make it, then that's the way it is. Yeah, I, I don't know. We can hear all their solutions, or what they think they might want to try and do to kill some of them. And to me, it's a bug. Do we put a pesticide out there and try and stop it, or, I don't believe in that at all. Because that's adding something else to our environment, or our ground, or birds, any of that. And I'm definitely against all of that. And I'm in the apple trees every day. You know, we don't do a lot of things that we used to do to keep them in better shape just for our health. So, it's going to come through, and whatever it is, it's going to be. I'm not prone to go cut a tree if it's alive, because we've seen the ash beetle bore bug, whatever. Yeah, but they are here.
Thank you. Any other questions for Article 33? Joe, Mark.
I just want to report that Scott's gotten a lot of help lately. Since Friday morning, there's been a large flock of robins eating the crab apples on Main Street. So, I think you've got less pruning in your future, Scott.
I had a lady today stop and make a comment. I guess that was a little bigger than a robin. But yeah, there are an awful lot of robins on Main Street.
Any other questions for Article 33? Hearing none, seeing none, let's go to Article 34. Shall the town appropriate the sum of $43,000 for Rutland County Tax? Any questions, comments, concerns regarding Article 34? Hearing none and seeing none, oh, it's the Brown.
I'm just going to take the initiative and explain this, because I think this is one of those line items that nobody has any clue what it's for, and we shouldn't approve money that we don't know where it's going. So, the Rutland County Tax supports the county courthouse, all the administration and the upkeep on it, and the Sheriff's Department. We don't get to set how much we're going to pay. It's divvied up amongst the communities in the county, so this is our fair share. Select Board doesn't set this, it's just what we pay. But I just wanted to clear that up, so everybody knows what, hopefully, what they're voting for.
Thank you.
Moving on to Article 35. Shall the town add an additional $75,000 for the fiscal year 25-26 operating budget in the Highway Department for the Vehicle Equipment Capital Reserve to support a long-term vehicle equipment replacement schedule? Any questions, comments, concerns regarding Article 35? Zoom call.
Yes, Melanie Coombs asks, "Will the $75,000 additional amount for vehicles be an annual ask if it is to be supporting a long-term replacement schedule?"
I believe that is the case for the Castleton line.
Well, I'm not sure if it's an annual, it's just a one-time.
That's going to be an annual ask. At this point, we're looking at requesting an additional $75,000 for this coming fiscal year, and possibly another as much as $75,000 the following year, to eventually ramp up the reserve account from the $110,000 it's at now, or we're requesting now, to approximately $250,000 to $300,000 every year, ongoing into the future, to support the 30-year plan that we have in place for vehicle replacement. If we do not do that, we will not necessarily have the funds we need to replace these vehicles as time progresses.
Yeah, since I had to do a lot of work on that thing, I know, and it's really, just like a comment was made earlier about the cost of fire apparatus, the plow truck, we just, the Select Board just authorized the purchase of a new tandem axle international dump truck with plow package. Anybody want to take a guess what that costs? Sure, $289,000. So, we have a grader that's a 1990 that's going to have to be replaced, we've got an excavator that's going to have to be replaced in the next eight years, eight, nine years. So, to have this money in place rather than borrow it, because if, if the, if you read this ballot five years from now, that said we need $400,000 added to the Highway Budget to replace the grader, probably, we wouldn't be sitting up here right now. We'd be hanging on Main Street somewhere. So, to, to put this into a long-term plan, so that we can replace this stuff and purchase it rather than finance it, which we pay interest on, that's what the plan is for, and it levels out. It's like, the first four years, it's high, and then it decreases a little bit, then it levels out for like the last 15 years, 15, 16 years. And that's the same for the Fire Department Reserve that's going to come up, and for the paving. I won't talk about those, because they're going to come up on the, as an article, but that's what we're facing with older equipment, and you see, we're down three plow trucks right now due to older vehicles and maintenance issues. So, bad news isn't going to get better with time. So, this was the way to try to get ahead of it with a long-range plan.
Mike?
Joe Howard, probably he'll be the one to answer these as well. So, I do have some questions, Wes. You have three that you're asking for contingency money, and then I see there's a couple more departments that you, we are looking to start a select fund for as well. What does that add to the budget percentage-wise if we approve those three?
The, for this year, if you added the money in there that was being asked this year, it goes from 4.1%, I thought it was four, but, it goes about 9.6%. To put the, it's $200,000 in total between the paving and the two other reserve accounts.
So, it's considerable, a percentage increase.
It is, about 5% or so.
Yeah. And what happens, we vote it this year, we don't vote it next year, and we don't vote it the third year, but we vote it the fourth year. Is there a contingency plan for that? What's your plan here?
Negative on the, on the contingency on this point, because it's, the cost of things are going up, so if we don't at least get through those first five years, four or five years of these plans, then when it comes time to replace these vehicles, we're not going to have it, and then we're going to have to look at borrowing money. And then, there's payments that go with that. So, if we borrow the money, we still have to have the money in the account to pay for those annual loan payments, which, right now, we have, we have enough budgeted to do two loan payments a year for $50,000. And we're paying for the loader, that's a 2022, and then we've got this new international tandem that's going to, payments we'll start on. So, we've got enough to pay for two payments, and that's it. If anything else goes wrong, catastrophic failure of an engine on the grader and stuff, we don't have the money right now. And it's not that people don't want their roads graded, it's not that the town government doesn't want that, it's just over the years, it hasn't been looked at as a long, long-term or long-range strategy to fund it so that it's there when we need it, rather than to try to spike a budget in a certain year to buy something.
But it's not, it's not, given that you're not going to have to spike the budget with the way this is designed.
Correct. If it doesn't get approved year to year to get us through that, that first four or five years, you're correct. And I don't know what the way around it is, because we vote on this year by year, and Select Boards can change year to year, and the next regime that's in here might not support it.
And that, and that's my, a bit of my concern, is what if it's not supported, and that, Mark?
I mean, there's probably like every other town that has insufficient funds to support their infrastructure, which includes vehicles, equipments, and roads. Then stuff starts falling into really states of disrepair, and when services drop because of that, then we have to look at ourselves and say, why did we vote no? I mean, I don't want to pay any more taxes than you do, Joe, I live in this town too, but I have to be realistic and go, I also want the roads maintained, and the fire trucks to be able to make it to that call when, when somebody needs them. So, it's just a, what do we want to pay for? Pay now or pay later?
And I'm not questioning, we need this stuff, Mike. I don't want you to think that that's what I'm doing. My question is, is there a better way?
I would love to, if anybody has a better way to help out, because only you vote year to year, it's, it's rough.
Do we have a strategic plan, a three to five-year plan, and is it visited? Do we look at it? Do we look at contingencies going forward with this equipment and stuff?
So, we just built this. So, this is our first year, and it would be revisited almost on an annual basis. We talked about five years, but because we vote year to year, they're keeping up in the status of our equipment, where we're at with it, making sure that it's going to, we do everything in our power to maintain it, which includes things like washing it, you know, to get the salt off things, to make them last as long as we possibly can, we have to do, so it doesn't prematurely come to its demise. So, it's, I think the strategy is maintenance, preventive maintenance, taking care of our equipment, and trying to make it long as last as possible with what we have, the money that we have. Our budget, this past year, I think we, just on the mower tractor, I think we spent like $27,000 repairing that mower. So, it's not cheap, and there's no, I don't think it's an easy solution, but if anybody has something, man, we'd love to hear from you.
I do know other towns now are looking to sub some of this stuff out. They're also looking to lease some equipment. Just, I just want to make sure that we're looking at all the options here.
Yeah, I did look at lease, talked to the bank, we have like, we have a $1.5 million with, I forgot what it's called, but like a lease loan type, we can borrow money when we need to, the $1.5 million. But you have to have the money, if we do that, and the voters don't approve something on a given year, then we're not going to have the money to pay back the loans or the leases. So, it's, it's really a catch-22. I don't know if there's a really simple way around this one.
Mary, can I have something to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, Joe, that we took a different approach to this, this year, by making the three separate line items, so the voters could see why we needed more money. You know, the overall budget is very close to last year's 3%. We didn't want people to face sticker shock at the polls and say, "We're going to vote down the budget." This way, you can look and see the specific, where the specific increases are. You know, for years and years, we've all thought inflation is 3.5% a year. The last couple of years, that hasn't been the case. So, this is where we've seen real big increases in operating the town budget. And our hope was that by isolating a few of these, people could see exactly what situation we're in, that it wasn't a case of the Select Board spending wildly, it's a case of, this is where the real hard increases are, to keep the public informed.
Andrew Bentley, just to follow up on this topic.
So, I'm hearing that, well, thank you first for your...
So, I'm hearing that, well, thank you first for your due diligence on providing a plan to move our equipment and our infrastructure into a better place in town. And I hear your point about, we don't wanna give sticker shock to the town. But I also am hearing that this just doesn't sound like this is still enough, the seventy-five K this year. If you had your, you know, sort of dream plan, what is the amount that would really take us to a point of safety that I'm sure is probably a bit more than that? I'd just be curious to hear what would it take to put us in a place of where, I feel like you're describing in a sense that we're on our back foot, but we're trying to move forward, but what would it look like if we weren't on our back foot, and we were in a comfortable place? What does that amount look like per year that we need? Does that make sense?
One-seventy-five for the next three years, and then we could flatten it out after that. But we don't think that that's really palatable at this time, so we wanted to take that and spread that over three years.
I agree. I think there could be pushback. I just, but I think hearing that number of what is maybe really needed is just as important to the conversation.
Well, we really wrestled with this and struggled with just the right way to approach it, and we decided that the best way to do it was be to tell the voters, this is where we're at, and these are the, these are the hard decisions we have to make, and we really feel the voters need to make them. So, that's why we took this approach. But we also did this unintentionally so that we could attempt to educate the voters as to why we need to do this.
Can I just remind everybody to speak closer into the microphones? Folks are having trouble on Zoom.
Nom, nom, nom. Can you hear me? All right, so, challenging my eyesight here, but the, the plan that I submitted to the select board, it has four years of increases, seventy-five thousand, seventy-seven thousand, seventy-seven thousand, and the last increase would be for twenty-four thousand. And then it dips a little bit for four years, it dips, but the average price over this course of time is about two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars a year that we need to put into that highway capital reserve to sustain ourselves long-term. And that was at a two-percent inflation rate. I wish we had two-percent inflation rate right now, but that's, again, trying to keep it at palatable, I use two percent. Ted Day?
Ted Day. For about ten years, I rode on our first aid squad. We covered five towns. We had three ambulances and a rescue truck. I think I rode about ten years, and I think when I first started, an ambulance to replace was about seventy-five thousand dollars. And when I left, it was over a hundred thousand, and that was just for the vehicle, no equipment on it. I'm in my house today because the fire department was there to put out a fire. So, I thanked the fire department. He remembers. And he told me I picked a good day to have a fire. It was a Sunday. There were five men, including... Who built the house? Who worked on that house?
Jim Roberts.
John Roberts. John Roberts, Jim, I'm sorry, Jim Roberts, who built my house, was on the crew. They were at the building, fire, pressure testing hoses, the response time, they were there. I still have a house, so. The vehicles are expensive, and they're not gonna get any cheaper, and this makes sense to me. The only sad thing is, is that there's a small group of us here that are hearing the good reasons for doing this, and anybody else that's not here to hear the good arguments is gonna vote as sticker shock, I guess, but I certainly think it's a good idea. So, thank you, guys.
Ted, this is being taped by Tech TV and on Zoom, and the reason this meeting was done earlier than normal was so that these videos can get out there and the public can get educated on what they're voting on. All right. Any other discussion on Article thirty-five?
Just real quick, these reserve funds, do we actually make some interest on them?
Yes, yes. Over three percent right now.
As some of you know, I've worked at Castleton State College for a long time. We had a board chair, whom some of you may know by the name Mike Odette from Orwell. He was a farmer. And as chair, he was appalled at how little the Vermont State Colleges were budgeting for replacement costs such as these. As a farmer, he assumed that ten percent of his annual costs ought to be put aside in a sinking fund for vehicle replacement. And if I look at our budget, that would be about four hundred grand. And, you know, I look at you, Mark, you're a successful businessman. You own a business that's labor-intensive, but it's also equipment-intensive, and I'm sure you have a plan for replacement of expensive equipment when it comes due. So, I think this is a great step you're taking as a board. If you, the previous boards, the ones that I served on, for example, had taken this years ago, we wouldn't be in the same pickle.
Mr. Mariter, I wanna make one more comment too. Go ahead. I think the residents of Castleton, those that have voted in the past four or five years, we have one building left that doesn't have emergency power backup. So, if there's a catastrophic event in Castleton, that rest assured that all of our public safety buildings, the town office, the garage, minus the transfer station, it has no, no emergency power up there. But they have emergency power so that we can continue to serve the community in a time of need. There's a couple articles on the ballot that establish more reserves for the buildings, too. But now we're, like I said, we're down to one, one building that doesn't have a capital reserve against it, so that when it's time to replace the roof or the boiler, paving, or parking lot, that money will be there in those reserves, so we don't, again, go back to the voters and spike the budget or let it fall into a state of disrepair. I came down Route thirty today, it's a state road, but from Middlebury down through Hubbardton, it was, it was a horrible road. And, and I drive other towns, and I'm, we've got some roads that are starting to get a little aging, like East Harbor and Road, but our roads are pretty darn good shape compared to many other communities around us, so. We just gotta get, keep the money in there so that we can maintain that infrastructure over time. You're gonna hear one on the paving tonight. We have thirty miles of road in town. And about every ten years, you have to resurface a road, so that's three miles per year at a hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars a mile. So, we'll talk more about that as we get through it, but there's, it's expensive to resurface roads. It's even more expensive if you let it fall apart and have to reclaim it. So, that'll be future discussion.
Okay, Joe Howard, again, Mike. I don't want you guys to think that I don't understand what it takes to maintain equipment. That's not what I was saying. Trust me, I got equipment, a lot of equipment. My question is, is we vote this down, we vote the paving down, and we vote it down for four years, do we have a contingency plan? That's what my question was, is do we have something, Plan B? And I know you're, you're gonna say, let it fall apart, but we can't do that either. And so, we've got to have a roadmap. If this doesn't work, I would assume.
Yeah, good question, Joe. One of the things that I had discussions with other towns on is, they do bonds, and they wait till things totally are out of control, and then they take out a two, three-million-dollar bond and fix it and pay that bond over a thirty-year period. So, there is other ways out there of doing it. It's just how you sell it to people that are going and voting in March of the year. But yes, there's other ways. Any other questions? Okay, moving on. Article thirty-six. We've talked about all these bunches already, we'll go through them anyway. Shall the town add an additional seventy-five thousand dollars to the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six highway department operating budget to support a long-term paving schedule for the thirty miles of paved roads and streets in the town of Castleton? Any questions, comments, concerns about Article thirty-six? I think this article is very similar to the one in stature just before it, but...
For the paving that would be done, Mary McIntyre again, for the paving that would be done, is that our road crew doing that, or would you be subcontracting that out?
We subcontract all paving out, unless it's like, spot paving, but normal paving is all contracted out. It's put out the bid.
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding Article thirty-six? Moving on to our next, Article thirty-seven. Shall the town add an additional sixty thousand dollars to the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six fire department operating budget, vehicle equipment reserve to support a long-term vehicle equipment replacement schedule? Any questions, comments on Article thirty-seven?
Bob McIntyre. Well, I would just like to thank our fire department, and I also would like to let everyone know that our fire department has enjoyed our new recreation facility also. We've had several exercises in that building, and that's where I got a chance to see our new ladder truck operate also. So, again, I do appreciate, and those are others that are using our recreation building.
Thank you, thank you. Any other questions, comments on Article thirty-seven? Okay, hearing none, seeing none, let's move to Article.
Let me add a little something to that. Chief Plant might have been working, what, five years, maybe, on a truck replacement plan? And we are currently awaiting a new engine six replacement, which I'm not sure if you're gonna call it engine six, but that's not important. We just replaced the ladder truck with a new tower. We replaced the brush truck and, with a, a new quad cab pickup with a, correct me if I'm wrong, but with a, it's gonna have a UTV and a trailer attached to it with a brush slide-out unit and a rescue unit that can be interchanged. They're putting tools and equipment on the truck, and that will ultimately replace the van as well, so it will be going from a total of seven vehicles down to five. But we'll actually be better equipped than we were with those five vehicles. It'll also reduce our maintenance costs. But what we've done with, when we replaced the ladder truck with the tower and we replaced the engine six, that will pretty much deplete our reserve account next year. So, we'll be starting off at about zero, and, well, more or less zero. Less than fifty, right, Mike? Will be less than fifty K. With a fire truck apparatus to replace engine three, if you're all familiar with engine three, which is our big fancy fire truck, which we've now had for ten years? No, fifteen years we've had. We replaced that in two thousand and ten. We're looking to replace that in two thousand and thirty, which is five years from now. And we estimate that's gonna be at least half a million dollars, probably more, closer to a million, to replace that. So, that's why we wanna ramp the reserve account up from one-hundred K a year to two-hundred K a year. So, hopefully, in five years' time, when it's time to replace that truck, we can just buy it. We don't have to go for a bond and then spike the budget later on. Any questions on the plan?
Sounds great. Yes, the equipment is expensive, and I can attest to that as being a member of the fire department as well. A new ladder truck is two million dollars. Engines are now approaching a million dollars apiece.
And we'll be actually looking to spec out and order that truck about three or four years out, because it's gonna take, what, two years to get it, Chief?
At least.
At least two.
Yes, the stuff's expensive, but when you gotta have it, you gotta have it. Okay. Moving on to Article thirty-eight. Shall the town establish a small tools and equipment capital reserve fund for Castleman First Response to replace critical public safety and critical life-saving tools and equipment? Any questions, comments regarding Article thirty-eight? Via Zoom?
Yes, from Zoom. Melanie Coombs asks, would you ask next year to add dollars to this reserve? What is the threshold to decide if reserve money was, will be used, five thousand, ten thousand, instead of operating funds?
Well, the first part is yes, but I don't know the dollar about for next year.
Yeah, the first part of, you have to have the voters establish the reserve, so the first year, it has to be on the ballot to establish it. Then next year, once we do a deeper dive into the amounts, looking at, again, a long-term replacement schedule, then that amount can be placed into the budget for the voters to consider. But we're probably talking things that are capital purchases, like over five thousand dollars is typically what the town does. But, like, if somebody's asking, what does the first responders need that would fall into this category? AEDs are a big one. To replace the automatic external defibrillators are one of their biggest expenses. But, and Justin's not here to speak on it, I don't believe, but he's been bugging me for years to do this, because the budget, the budget for Castleman First Response is not a very big budget, and they get a lot of support from regional ambulance service, but a lot of it falls on us, so the big expenditures are like AEDs. So, we won't know that number till next year, once we can establish that timeline of when things need to be replaced.
And I can chime in on this as a local EMS provider. Seconds count, and time's everything. And if we can put more AEDs in the hands of our first responders, I know our police department has a couple EMTs on duty, and they carry AEDs in the cruisers, correct, Chief? Yes.
Every cruiser has one.
Every cruiser has one, and when you need one, seconds count. It makes the, it's absolutely life or death. And so, you know, once again, it's another expense that we're paying for these things, but if there's one thing that can really give life safety benefit for the money you spend, it's these pieces of equipment, that's for sure.
And, and our first respond, our Castleman first responders, they don't have an ambulance. So, they're responding from their homes in their own vehicles, so they take this stuff with them to be able to respond. And so, if they don't have this stuff, it's, they become like a boat anchor or something. They don't, they don't have the tools.
Ted Day. When somebody has a heart attack, they're clinically dead. CPR without a defibrillator is gonna keep them, their blood circulating, oxygenated blood circulating, but it's not gonna restart the heart. So, if the first responders have defibrillators, that's the critical thing for somebody with a heart attack. They're clinically dead until that rhythm can be reestablished. And the CPR is great, but you still need to defibrill.
I guess the question everyone has to ask themselves is, if I don't die today, is it worth it?
All right, on a lighter note, any other questions, comments on Article thirty-eight? Okay, all right. Moving on to Article thirty-nine. Shall the town vote to eliminate the election of the office of constable and the select board appoint a town officer to discharge constable's duties that do not require law enforcement authority, if any? Any questions, comments on Article thirty-nine? Mary McIntyre?
What would those duties be?
Would you speak to that, Chief, or, I'm sorry, it's the non-law enforcement?
Up per statute, they can dispatch injured deer. They can serve civil process. They can remove unruly people from town meeting. Could be you. You still here?
Tax collector.
Yeah, help the delinquent tax collector, and assist the health officer. Thank you. And I'm the deputy health officer, so you'd be helping me too.
So, our town has been fortunate to have a dedicated constable for, I forget how many years?
Fifty.
Fifty years?
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three. But that's coming to an end. Si's not running for reelection this year. And law enforcement has become much, much more complicated than it was a hundred years ago, two-hundred years ago, whenever Vermont started the system of... 100 years ago, 200 years ago, whenever Vermont started the system of elected constables. And after a lot of consideration, the board felt that it would be better to, uh, we can't eliminate the position of constable, the voters can do that. Um, the thought was that we have a good police force, a good police, professional police department in our community, and that given the complexity of law enforcement today, it would be best if we left all law enforcement in the town of Castleton to the Castleton Police Department. Um, because it's an elected position, you don't necessarily have to have law enforcement experience to get elected, and that can cause problems of liability for the community. That's why we have this on the ballot.
Yes, sir.
Mike Fan, just a quick question, um, training involved in that position? And who would conduct it?
Go ahead, Dick. So- The, the constable position, um, this would be non-law enforcement duties, so the town has to appoint an op- a person to do that. Uh, it, which would involve no law enforcement, um, authority needed there. Um, so as far as training goes, there's nothing that the Vermont Criminal Justice Training Council would require, because they're not gonna have any law enforcement authority. I'll answer your question, Mike, or not. Because what happens, somebody can vote for somebody for the office of constable. Um, and in today's world, they have to, to be able to use, have law enforcement authority, they gotta, they have to go through training at the Vermont Criminal Justice Training Council. This case, uh, as non-law enforcement authority, that they can, somebody can vote for them, but they're not gonna have that, that li- we're not gonna have that liability if they're not certified, um, being out there in the public. There's, you heard what they can do, uh, per statute.
Well, I understand that there would be law enforcement training, or would there be civil training?
That's a question that we would have to, um, the select board would have, if it's appointed, um, it's different than being elected, so the, the select board can impose some requirements on them.
Si Loomis. Trying to stay out of this. So, I used to be on the E-Board for the Justice Training Council. Um, I was appointed by the governor's office, I was the only constable appointed, and the mandates that are coming down now for all law enforcement, some of it's totally ridiculous, but you need to be certified, you need to be certified to carry firearm, and there's all sorts of new stuff that comes out. But I wanna point out that when I was on the, the E-Board, um, there are other people there, and I fought for the constables. At one time, there was only 68, 67 certified constables in the state to do law enforcement. Now, that meant that some of them were working full-time for other policing agencies, but most of the time, they were, uh, working for their towns and stuff. Now, we date back to the old Vermont Constitution, where the sheriff, which is a sheriff, and the constable were the only two law enforcement officers listed in our constitution. They are constitutional officers. But I've had to sit on the E-Board and make decisions, some of them not for the constables, because I had to look for the better interest of law enforcement, whether you're elected or appointed. And as you know, today, I mean, we can't keep law enforcement officers in Vermont. We can't keep state troopers, we can't keep deputy sheriffs, we can't keep chiefs of police because of the amount of mandates that have been thrown on the law enforcement. And it's not gonna get any better. And that's throughout the United States, not just Vermont. But I had the opportunity to make some of the improvements for constables. I was the, uh, president of the Vermont Constables Association, I had to go up to Montpelier a number of times and testify before some of the committees. The, uh, person that, uh, replaced me, we haven't done nothing, there hasn't been any training or nothing, and we, uh, most of us get trained through the Castle PD or Fairhaven or whatever it is. But if you're gonna be in this business, you gotta be trained as other law enforcement officers that were here, are here, and firefighters and stuff is the training. But I had to make decisions when I was on the E-Board, and some of them weren't pleasant decisions for our constables. And I want you to know that it was very political sitting there with some of the bigwigs up in Montpelier at some of the meetings. Thank you. Any other questions, comments, concerns regarding Article 39? Hearing none, seeing none, let's move to Article 40. Shall the town establish a capital reserve for the recreation center, former Castleton Village School for capital repairs, replacement, or upgrades to capital improvements? Roof replacement, boiler, heating system replacement, et cetera, or paving? Any questions, comments on Article 40? Hearing none, seeing none, let's move to Article 41.
Um, question from Melanie Coombs, would this reserve actually be part of the general government buildings reserve? Or specific for rec center formerly CBS and not part of the rec budget?
Would like to take a stab at this.
Sorry, sorry. Um, this would establish it as a, just as a, a reserve in that depart- and for the rec center or that building, not, um, in general government. I think it's, it's important on that to make sure that people understand when they're voting that there's a reserve for capital improvements in, for those building. The, the police department, fire department, it's called the public safety building, and, um, the town office have them in their budgets as well, it's not a standalone. It, it shows it in the budget line.
Um, part two, but the rec center is part of the general government buildings?
So it would show up in the government, in the CBS, uh, building portion of that, uh, all three of those buildings, but it'd be broken out, so they're, they show separately. But it, so it wouldn't be part of the rec department's budget, it'd be part of the government buildings.
Any other questions, comments, concerns regarding? Anyone else regarding Article 40? Moving on to Article 41. Shall the town of Castleton vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $3,000 for support of Slate Valley Cares to provide food, security services to residents of the town of Castleton? Any comments, concerns regarding Article 41?
Oh, that's a new request, right? They haven't asked before, only Cast- or only, um, Castleton cares. Is that correct? I think it is correct, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Bob's fault.
Okay, can anybody answer where Slate Valley Cares located? Are they in Castleton or are they in Fairhaven?
Their name's Green, in Fairhaven.
They're in Fairhaven, so-
They're, they, they've been there for a long time, they just changed their name to Slate Valley.
Fairhaven concerns.
Fairhaven concerns.
Okay, so if we voted the 3,000 in, that 3,000 will go only to Castleton residents. It won't go to Fairhaven residents or any of that, is that? How can, how can they do that? I don't know if they can do that.
Is that's not, it's not what that says? That's the way it was read?
Uh, Sue Carolus, um, Bob, I, I can't give you, uh, an answer. I do know there are many families from Castleton who go to Slate Valley. And, and, did somebody just say what? No, okay. I'll stay here in this. So, um, and I think probably the reason is they're open every day, very visible, might be so, you know, some privacy issues too, um, and, uh-
They have clothing too, as well.
Yeah, they have, yeah, clothing. So, but there, but quite a few Castleton residents go over there. That's all I can tell you.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll just quickly echo what's, what Sue said. I volunteer at Slate Valley Cares, um, oh, about half a day a week or so. And it's a very busy place, and there are numerous families from Castleton that take advantage of mostly the food, but also the clothing. And it's, there's a lot of fresh food, fresh, fresh vegetables, meat. It's quite remarkable. And sometimes the extent of my job is to inspect the refrigerator or the freezer with the meat, or, you know, get the produce out on the, on the shelves. And sometimes I say, will this, will this, you know, all be used? And the answer is always yes. Things are, it's very much used by yes.
Thank you.
But I can't answer anything about the budget, just a moment here.
Yes, sir.
Joe Adarola, just a question, a clarification. And this comes up in several of the articles that follow. What does raise mean? It says that vote to raise, appropriate, and expend. Who's raising?
That would be, that would be included in the item, or in the line when we say amount raised by taxes when we calculate the tax rate. If the voters approve to, to expend this money, then we raise it via taxes. So when that, when you see the worksheet where we calculate the tax rate, that would be included in that number of amount to be raised by taxes.
But why doesn't it say we're voting to appropriate 3,000 dollars?
Because the select board cannot expend any funds without the approval of the voters.
Thank you.
Technicalities.
And I wanna expand a little bit on the Slate Valley Cares. I don't know how they made out in other towns, but I do know that Slate Valley Cares went on a petition drive to get surrounding towns to contribute modest amounts to their budget. So I know that they had people going out getting petitions signed in Castleton and Hubbardon, Benson, West Haven, I don't know where else. And I have, and in Fairhaven as well, and I do not know how they made out, but I do know that they submitted a petition to the town of Castleton in January, and that's why it's on our ballot now.
So Bob, I think your, the answer to your question is in the article. Um, when it says, um, to provide food, security services to residents of the town of Castleton.
That's why I asked, that's what it says right there.
Yeah. To go back to your question, sir, that, uh, some of these articles from 41, uh, where it says shall, uh, vote to raise, appropriate, and expend, these are items that are not included in the budget. These are additional. So you can vote on the budget, and that's been established by the select board and the town manager, and these are additional expenses that are not covered in there. I think any organization, um, can petition to be put on the ballot for additional expenses. I forget the number, exact number of signatures that you would need to, to do. And, uh, this is the first time. So a couple, a couple items down is Castleton Cares, they have had a line item for many years. But this is the first year that, uh, Slate Valley Cares has been on.
I think we got a Zoom question?
Uh, Zoom comment, Melanie Coombs states Slate Valley Cares serves Fairhaven, Hubbardon, West Haven, Benson, Pulte, and Castleton, as well as other nearby towns. This is the first year they're asking other towns, uh, they'll be on other towns ballots.
Joe Mark, uh, since Bob is focused on the language, could someone clarify the distinction between the phrase to raise, appropriate, and expend, and the phrase, uh, deem necessary and appropriate?
No, because Article 43, 44, and 45, do, Joe is correct, deem necessary and appropriate.
But they've been already voted on before.
Oh, these other ones are new, I think that's the, that's the difference. I think that's the difference.
That is correct.
Yeah?
Good answer, Joe.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the first year with the language to raise, appropriate, and expend.
My ears are ringing.
First year on those two that use that specific language.
I don't think that's the case. Uh, for example, Article 46, which is for, um, Marble Valley Regional Transit, that's been on our ballot for a long, long time. And that uses the raise, appropriate, and expend language too.
I, I think part of this may be the actual verbiage of how they put their petition forward, and some may say, you know, raise, appropriate, and expend, and some may say, shall the town deem necessary to appropriate? I think it's just some word it this way and some word it that way, is that an accurate statement?
That may be the case, yeah.
And they can't change it. Yeah, and they can't change it, if they petition, if the petition states that, the article has to say.
I do know that we're legally obligated to put on the ballot whatever the petition requests. So I think it depends on who wrote the petition and what language they chose to use. And that may be old and new statutes or old and new traditions, I really can't speak to that, Joe. I think Jennifer has her, had her hand up?
Yes, there another Zoom question.
You answered, you, you gave the same answer as your wife.
Can anybody from Slate Valley Cares, did, did you ask the same dollar amount from each of the five towns or six towns, whatever was listed? Was the same dollar amount, or was it, the dollar amounts varied? Can anybody?
I happen to know that Nancy, um, this, oh, yeah. Um, again, you know, it's a busy place, and I did overhear and, uh, look at some of the petitions. And there, this was, I believe, the lowest amount of all the towns.
Our, our town was the lowest of all the towns? I'm, I'm-
There were many towns that were higher, I bet, I can, I can vouch for that.
Okay, it would be my impression they would do it by the population. I mean, they're not, they're not gonna ask the town of West Haven for more money than what they asked for Castleton.
Right, and also I think, I really shouldn't, shouldn't switch this, I'm not on the board.
It's, yes, it's not a big deal, I'm just curious how they came up with the $3,000.
I think we should stay away from their direction.
Yeah.
Right, I agree.
We all have to vote on this, so we, we kinda need answers to this. I guess nobody from Slate Valley Cares is here.
So if that's, that being the case, let's, let's move on.
Right.
Let's move on. Let's move to Article 42. Shall the town of Castleton vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $5,000 for support of the Boys and Girls Club of Rutland County to provide services to residents of the town? Any questions, comments on Article 42?
Is this for their camps?
Name please.
Julie Finnegan, is this for their camps that they do in town? Cause they have a Boys and Girls Club at Castleton after school. And I believe they continue that into the summer. So what is, do you, we have any idea what the specific Boys and Girls Club are providing for that amount?
I don't think we have any reps here, some Boys and Girls Club.
No, we don't know.
Okay, cause the school district is no longer funding the Boys and Girls Club. So I don't know if that's why, because there are a lot, this is, that's during the school year. And $5,000 doesn't cover but three families, right? Like, so that seems like a low amount, that seems like to me like it's a, a camp of some sort, or some like, you know, week, couple week-long program for kids, so.
I don't think we have any details.
Okay.
We don't know.
Interesting, it'd just be interesting to know what the $5,000 is exactly for that they're doing specifically in Castleton that isn't already paid for and dealt with through the Boys and Girls Club for after-school programs.
Any other questions, comments, concerns on Article 42? Moving along to Article 43. Shall the town deem necessary and appropriate $3,500 for support of ARC Rutland area- of A R C, Rutland Area, determining that the program serves the residents of the town with advocacy, resources, and community for citizens with developmental disabilities and their families? Any questions, comments, concerns regarding Article forty-three? Hearing none, seeing none, let's move on to Article forty-four. Shall the town deem necessary and appropriate three thousand six hundred dollars for administrative support of Castleton Cares Incorporated, determining that the program serves the residents of the town with emergency assistance to local people in need? Any questions, comments, concerns regarding Article forty-four?
Mark Brown. So I don't know a lot about this program, but I do know that it's located in the town of Castleton. I wish that our police officer, Justin Sargenko, could be here. He's very involved in this program, and it serves Castleton residents. It's a great program. I'm not saying that any other program isn't. I just know that this program is located within our community and has great community support.
I, I, I can make comment on some of that. So we deliver thirty to forty meals every three times a year. I know Justin's on the board for there, so, and it's not open all the time. So it's two different organizations. When you think of Slate Valley versus what, what Castleton Cares is, it's, it's not open all the time. You have sometimes get appointments to get food. They are open on Monday nights for people, so that setup a little different, it's strictly for food.
Thank you, Chief.
Sue DeCarolus just said.
Sue DeCarolus just add to what was just said. I do know that people can call, they have her number, they can call, they can make appointments, and she will meet them to pick up food. So, and I think, Chief, you would know this, that also, I know the police have worked with, with Castleton Cares in delivering, you know, large boxes for certain holidays, and probably, I don't know how many this year, but nearly a hundred. So I, I agree with you, Mark. I think it's a great service.
Thank you. Sue?
Sue Day. But this Article forty-four says that that three thousand six hundred dollars is for administrative support. Yeah, as opposed to food.
Mary?
Mary McIntyre. Because we're having our meeting early like we are, shout out to these groups like the Boys and Girls Club, Castleton Cares, and Slate Valley. Maybe somehow you can get us some answers, because these are obviously things we're, we're stumped on. So maybe because we're meeting ahead like this, we could get these kind of answers.
I'll take a note.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions regarding Article forty-four? Hearing none, seeing none, let's move to Article forty-five. Shall the town deem necessary and appropriate twenty-five thousand dollars for the support of Castleton Community Seniors Incorporated, determining that the program serves residents of the town with the operation of the Castleton Community Center? Any questions regarding Article forty-five?
I don't have a question, but I do have something that I would like to say. Susan, Sue DeCarolus, I'm on, on the board at Castleton Community Seniors, and I'm here tonight in place, and I hate to disappoint you, in place of Joanne Riley, our director. But on, on the part of the Board of Directors, the Director, Joanne Riley, our Program Director, Lori Penauer, and all the members and people that take, participate in all the activities, really sincerely want to thank this community for every year supporting the Community Center. It's very much appreciated. It's, it's very much needed. And Joanne wanted me to mention a few things. We have the, our transportation program for the elderly and disabled. The elderly, that's me. And we provide eight hundred and thirty-six rides for seniors and disabled residents here in Western Rutland County for doctors' appointments, physical therapy, adult daycare, senior meals, and essential food shopping. And six hundred and sixty-one of those rides were residents in Castleton. We also do senior meals twice a week. The Community Center served over one thousand five hundred and sixty-three senior meals at the center. One thousand twenty-nine of those meals were to residents of Castleton. And not, not only is this providing a, a nice, healthy meal, but it's inviting socialization, providing socialization, which is so appreciated. Also, we are the distribution site for Meals on Wheels. Want to get a shout out to Meals on Wheels and all the people that are really delivering to people throughout the community. Over six thousand home-delivered meals were, were delivered here in Castleton, Bonnese, and Hyattville. We also have the wellness program, and so here we have exercise and fitness programs that include bone builders for osteoporosis prevention, Tai Chi for arthritis, Tai Chi for diabetes, in a matter of balance for false prevention. And over eighty Castleton residents take wellness classes at the center. So there's really, I could go on and on, but there's really a lot of activities provided at the center. And if you haven't been there, you can participate without being a senior citizen, okay? But a lot of people will say to me, oh, you know, at no cost. Very good. No cost. So I think it's really kind of, I'm kind of really happy to be a resident living in Bonnese when I hear what's going on. You know, the library, the recreation, you know, our police department, I fight, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm kind of proud to be here in Castleton and, and seeing that we're all really working together. But Joanne, would, I would be really remiss not to, to say to you again, thank you so much for your support of the Community Center. Really appreciate it.
Hey, I want to comment on that, too. I'll promote their Friday coffee, free coffee morning hours. We go there and visit once in a while, and it's great to go and just visit with people. And if you follow the police car from the police department, you'll know it's Waffle Day. Because people be there on Waffle Day.
Are you having fun at the Holiday Jelly Dough?
I have not. But it's, it's worth going in and just visiting with people. And I, I was talking anywhere from budgets to sidewalks to roads, it's always nice to hear from people. But Waffle Day, follow the police car.
It is a tremendous resource for our community. When my mother-in-law passed away, her husband was distraught and depressed and wouldn't leave the house. And Joanne brought him to the Community Center, hoping that he would find some socialization. He met a lot of friends. He met a new woman that he married. And in his nineties, he and his wife are living independently, and they're very, very happy. So God works in mysterious ways, and he does some work at the Castleton Community Center.
And I just want to give a shout out to State University, the Vermont State University at Castleton. Sorry. But we have a game day once a month, and different teams from the college come over to the game day. And I work the desk on that day, and by the way, it's not a lot of work. But I do the desk, and, and I hear what's going on in the other room, and I just want to be in there, because it really is this conversation between older citizens and young, young men and women here from Castleton, and it's really wonderful. And this is the last thing I will say. We are most fortunate to have Joanne Riley as the Director of the Castleton Community Seniors, and equally fortunate to have Lori Penauer. They have created a dynamic program, and they are both huge Energizer bunnies. You know, we're very fortunate.
Great stuff. If there's one word to say about the Castleton Community Center, it's a gem, that's for sure. No doubt about that. Okay. Moving on to Article forty-six. Shall the town of Castleton vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of three thousand five hundred dollars for the support of the partial funding of the Marble Valley Regional Transit Districts, the bus, public transit service to the residents of the town? Any questions, comments about Article forty-six? Hearing none and seeing none, let's move on to Article forty-seven. Shall the town deem necessary and appropriate six thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars to support the Rutland Area Visiting Nurses and Hospice? To support Rutland Area Hospice at sixty, yeah, hang on, let me read this again. Six thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars to support the Rutland Area Visiting Nurses and Hospice, five hundred and fifty dollars to support Rutland Area Hospice, and six thousand one hundred and seventy dollars to support RAVNA and Home and Community Health Services. Hope I got it right that time. Any questions on Article forty-seven? Yes. Hey, what's your name, dear?
Thank you. Gina Grove. I am with the, well, have the ballots been printed yet? That's a question. Yes, okay. So I just want to clarify, we are the V N A and hospice of the Southwest Region and have been since 2014. So RAVNA was a longstanding name. Also, we did not request that split, so I guess if it was, was to be honored that way, we would make sure that the sums would be appropriated that way, but we did request a overall sum not to be split by program designation, six thousand seven hundred and twenty. So just to clarify, our letter of request. But my name is Gina Grove. I'm the Development Manager within the philanthropy department at the V N A and hospice of the Southwest Region. So I, too, would like to say thank you to the voters and the town of Castleton, as well as the select board for your support last year and many years prior. This is a level-funded request, so we hope that it is approved once again. It is a critical need. I'm going to speak off the cuff, and then I do have a couple of notes. I think because we are a hospital-oriented or health-oriented organization, there is the misunderstanding that we are like a hospital and therefore have tons and tons of funding. That's not true. We are very tight-strapped. We actually run an operational deficit. So this funding and all of town funding, which we request from every town that we provide services for, and we've provided services in Rutland, Bennington, and now Franklin Counties as of this year. You know, it's a bit of a jump. That's the Green Mountain Care Board designation, to clarify. But we are not rolling in it, and we very much depend on this care, or excuse me, we very much depend on these funds from all the towns that we select, we request funds from. And we request funds based on the patient count and the number of patient visits, so we can request as fairly and equitably as possible. So 2024 was another challenging year for the V N A, as was the case for most home health agencies across the country. As I mentioned, our agencies lost two hundred million, excuse me, two million from operations last year. Unfortunately, these financial challenges are not going away, as many of us are probably aware of the healthcare landscape within our state. Medicare intends to cut our reimbursement over the next few years by almost eight percent, and even though the state has eliminated our Medicaid provider tax due to years of underfunding, we still lose money on every Medicaid program. Our budget for fiscal year 2025 is projecting a two-million operating deficit. Because we are almost entirely dependent upon Medicare and Medicaid reimbursement, ninety-two percent of our revenue is Medicare and Medicaid. Town funding is critical. In 2023, excuse me, yes, in 2023, the V N A provided over ninety-four thousand visits to three thousand four hundred and fourteen patients throughout Rutland and Bennington Counties. Just to clarify, we did not take on Franklin County till 2024. In Castleton, we provided one hundred and twenty-one residents, five thousand seven hundred and thirteen visits in their homes. We also provided over one point seven million in charitable care. We do that every year. We cannot say no to any patient, but that is part of our designation. So regardless if we are paid for that care, we cannot say no to that patient. So that's part of my job within the philanthropy department, is to help bridge that gap, because every year we see an excess of one point six million in charitable care spent. By providing these services in the home, we've saved residents' money. We've saved the state money. The average cost of one overnight stay in a hospital is now fourteen thousand nine hundred. The average daily cost of a home health provider is ninety-two dollars, and the daily nursing home cost is two hundred and sixty-one. However, Medicare's decision to continue to cut our reimbursement is counterintuitive to this fact. Hospitals are relying on home health care for their patients more than they ever have in the past. We free up beds. Many Vermont hospitals are finding themselves at capacity. In order to help free up beds, they count on the skill and expert, and experience of home health clinicians to ensure continuity of care for the critical needs of the patients they are discharging. Where hospitals only have a finite number of beds for patients, there is no limit to the number of patients a home health agency can care for, and with your support, we can continue to care for them all. Financial challenges are just one of the issues facing home health in this agency. I'm sure many of you have seen stories in the media regarding violence in hospitals and towards hospital workers. Home health staff has safety challenges as well every day. Our staff go into unsafe situations, including homes and places identified as potential drug activity areas, hotels, homeless camps, and under the current V T designate, or excuse me, Vermont designation rules, we are required to go in those places no matter what, unless a clinician feels unsafe. And then we very much encourage them to make sure that they stay safe and to leave that area if they do feel unsafe. But again, we cannot say no to caring for that patient. We must continue to invest in safety measures and precautions for our staff to ensure they are able to escape harm if need be. Towns fund, town funds help us do this. It's an element of home health that is not often discussed, but needs to be, because it is the clinician's reality. It is not my reality. Not only is our staff at risk for their safety, they are also seeing medically sicker patients. We are seeing patients with significant mental health and substance issues. Fifty-one percent of our patients have a diagnosed underlying mental health or substance use issue. These patients tend to be less compliant with their plan of care, which makes the length of our visits longer for potentially, and potentially require more visits, visits, which in turn increases our costs. For Medicare, our largest payer, we are paid episodically, which means regardless of whether we do five visits or fifteen in a thirty-day period, we are paid the same amount. So again, we are very much in need of this, even though we do have a very large budget. We are very much in need of this funding, and I would like to invite anyone who wants to know more about our organization. I brought some copies of our 2023 annual report. You're welcome to come grab one from me. And I'd also like to remind the community the breadth of services that we offer. Everything from prenatal care through end-of-life care. So if you have a surgery and you want to heal at home, ask your doctor about that. If you need wound care, if you need physical therapy, if you are a pregnant mother, variety of services, really, beginning of life through end-of-life care. So just keep that in mind. If you do want to be at home, you are able to do that because of the V N A and hospice.
Thank you. Any other discussion on Article forty-seven? Hearing none, seeing none, let's move to Article forty-eight. Shall the town deem necessary and appropriate four thousand eighty-eight dollars for the support of Rutland Mental Health Services, determining that the program serves residents of the town with counseling, substance abuse, and emergency services? Any questions, comments, concerns regarding Article forty-eight? Hearing none and seeing none, let's move on to Article forty-nine. Shall the town deem necessary and appropriate nine hundred dollars for the support of R S V P and the Vermont, and the Volunteer Career Center, determining that the program serves residents of the town with volunteering opportunities and community services? Any questions, comments, concerns regarding Article forty-nine? Hearing none and seeing none, let's move to Article fifty. Shall the town deem necessary and appropriate two thousand dollars for the support of Southwestern Vermont Council on Aging, determining that the program serves residents of the town with elder services? Any questions, comments, concerns regarding Article fifty? Hearing none and seeing none, we'll move to Article fifty-one. Shall the town deem necessary and appropriate one thousand dollars for the support of Vermont Association for the Blind and Visually Impaired, determining that the program serves residents of the town with services to enable the blind and visually impaired to achieve and maintain independence? Questions, comments, concerns regarding Article fifty-one? Moving on to Article fifty-two. Shall the town deem necessary and appropriate two thousand seven hundred and twenty-five Questions, comments, concerns regarding Article fifty-one? Moving on to Article fifty-two. Shall the town deem necessary and appropriate two thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars for the support of Brock Community Action in Southwestern Vermont, determining that the program serves residents of the town with weatherization, emergency food, and small business development? Any questions, comments, concerns regarding Article fifty-two?
I'll just say, I love volunteering for this town, it's really a vibrant community, but the MVP volunteers are up at the table today, so I really appreciate your long-term planning, your commitment to this town, and the time and energy you put in. Thanks a ton.
Thank you. Any other discussions for Article fifty-two? With that being said, I'll re-comply my negligence of duties, and I will give the floor to a couple of folks we have here that I think you may want to hear from. First, I'll give the floor to our Vermont State Legislature, Zach Harvey. I should have given you the floor at the beginning of the meeting, sorry about that, but we'll let you get out and speak with your life.
Thanks very much. Is this on? Good. So it's great, well, thank you for having me to the board, I really appreciate the time, and I just really wanted to come tonight just to say hello. I see a lot of familiar faces in the room, and I see a lot of faces that I haven't seen before, so by way of, so I guess a couple of things I want to accomplish tonight is want to introduce myself to those that don't know me, and then maybe to touch briefly on what's happening in the state capital that I think will be of interest to all of you here tonight. So I guess by way of background, I was born and raised here in Castleton, went through the Castleton School District, graduated from Fairhaven Union High School, and then went to Province College, Devon, Rhode Island, where I studied political science and economics. After graduating there, I moved to New York City and spent close to ten years working in financial services for companies like the New York Stock Exchange and NASDAQ, and luckily was able to move back to Vermont in early twenty twenty-four, and had been living back in the community for the past year, and was appointed by Governor Phil Scott for this position end of twenty twenty-four, and was sworn in on January eighth of twenty twenty-five. So a couple of things that I think are just relevant to the room, and, you know, there are topics that you read about in the media and that I know you talk about at your dinner table, and issues that the legislature is really focused on in terms of omnibus legislation that the governor is proposing, and those are education, that's public safety, that's housing, and of course, top of mind is affordability, which impacts all of us here in this room. And I think far too many of us, you know, have had to move away from the place that we want to call home, and trying to find a way back, you know, and to make sure that it makes economic sense, you know, and so I think insofar as education, which I know is top of mind for a lot of people in the room, and I'm happy to take some questions, but I will, I will front around that by saying that we're still working out and ironing out a lot of the details that are coming to the House of Representatives with the governor's team. So as far as education goes, I know there are contours of that plan that are being reported in the media that all of you, I'm sure, are talking about amongst yourselves and here in the community, I can tell you that I'm following the media coverage as well. A lot of that is being ironed out with the governor's team and particularly senators. So I think if you really want to be closest to this issue, Rutland County Senators, Terry Williams and Dave Weeks and Brian Collimore are really some great resources to tap into that are much closer to the issue than I am at the moment. I can tell you that public safety is a chief concern of mine, and, you know, we heard, even, you know, politics is local, right, and some of the issues and concerns that you all have in this room, we talked about tonight in terms of theft and crime and things that are going on. Luckily, we have a very responsive and talented police force, so thank you chief for being here tonight as well. I can tell you that as a member of the House Judiciary Committee, you know, my job is to help provide oversight and hear the concerns that are happening, both in law enforcement and then also in the courts. And I think one of the things that you all will be hearing about, if you haven't already, is raise the age. And this is the idea and the concept of some legislators in Montpelier to raise the age to nineteen for youthful offender status. To me, this is something that's really concerning in terms of wanting to hold people that commit violent crimes, importantly violent crimes, accountable for their actions, right? And I think that's something that, you know, I see a lot of head nodding, this is something that we, I think, all agree on, is making sure that we don't have, I received testimony just last week that there was one instance down in Bennington where an individual had over two thousand police interactions over two years. So it, you know, and that averages out to about sometimes four interactions in a single day. So I can tell you that this is something that I aggressively talk about, both in my committee, my committee, and then also with fellow legislators in the House, to make sure that we really try to address any of these problems that are facing our state. You also saw up at the northern border, you know, especially in the media, we hear a lot about the southern border, but there are concerns at the northern border, and these are things that the Judiciary Committee is also talking about on a daily and weekly basis. Affordability, you know, I think what, just one, one instance where we're really trying to address affordability is for veterans in our communities. And so Vermont Legislature currently has a bill looking to relieve income tax on veterans' benefits. We're the only state in the entire country that doesn't have this benefit currently, so this is something that we're fighting regularly with to make sure that we get it passed this legislative session. Housing is another big one, and I can tell you that there really is no silver bullet on this plan, I can tell you one of the things that's being addressed and discussed is really looking at Act two fifty reprieve and exemptions, and this is something that is working its way through committees, and again, these things take time, and I think that's one of the greatest appreciations that I have in the difference from my past life in New York to working in politics is that, you know, there, nothing happens overnight. And as the best-laid plan is introduced and proposed, there are a lot of special interests, even in a great state like Vermont, that are, you know, actively making sure that their voices are heard louder than some of the people that are paying taxes and voting here. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions for those that have them, and if not, you can, I'm very accessible, you can find my email on my cellphone on the legislative webpage, you just type my name, you can find a picture of me and all my contact details. I'm also in the community on Mondays, otherwise I'm up in Montpelier Tuesday through Friday, but I am always accessible. So with that, thank you for having me, and I'm happy to take any questions that folks might have. I was gonna say, either I answer them all, or it's getting late. Sue.
Well, thanks for being here tonight.
My pleasure.
You know, when you were, I did watch the Commissioner of Public Safety Sunday night.
Yeah, Jim Morrison.
Yeah. And, you know, one of the things I'm thinking is about is, you know, when you're saying raise the age, I think that has a lot to do with the frontal lobe.
Sure.
And, and actually, they were quoting the frontal lobe is fully developed by twenty, it's not, it's like twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and I guess, you know, one of my concerns is, is how we're struggling to meet mental health needs. And I mean, at a very early age, and I can just see connections between not getting service and growing up to be eighteen or nineteen and a repeat offender, you know? And I just feel like we're hearing about it, but I know that, per se, in our, our school district, I know you've heard me say it, and it's like the broken record, but it's a true record, is we're calling over to Rutland Mental Health, and we're getting, oh, yes, we'd like to serve that kid, maybe in three months. And, and so our kids over here are not getting served, and I'm not throwing Rutland Mental Health under the bus, they are undated. So I just, I do feel for these, these families who are really needing service and, and kids, tons of kids going through the cracks, and I'm just wondering if that kind of discussion comes up in public safety.
Yeah, no, it absolutely does, and I, I've heard your comments and your passion for mental health in our schools at the Slate Valley School Board Meeting, and so I want to thank you too for being such an actively engaged citizen in our community. I think insofar as mental health, I think one of the other terms that is often goes hand in hand with raise the age is the, the term diversion, right? And looking at folks, and I hear you, Sue, I think mental health is a huge component of this and something that needs to be addressed, it's under-resourced and underutilized, so it's something that we can talk about too, and I know that you have ideas that you want to present to the legislature as well. The thing that I would say, you know, diversion can be extremely helpful, especially for, and listen, it's not, you know, throwing the book at kids who make a mistake in life even once, twice, or three times, that's not what we're looking to do in terms of holding people accountable. But when I think of accountability, it's these, you know, again, violent offenders that are vandalizing our downtowns, making our community feel less safe and very different than what it used to even just five years ago. You know, I've had meetings with, you know, State's Attorney Ian Sullivan over in Rutland, and, you know, I would tell you that some of the stuff that is coming through Rutland and through this community is truly shocking, you know, in terms of from Massachusetts, driving up to Montreal, from New York City to our community, and again, up to Montreal. So, you know, my, the concern that I hear is one, giving kids a path to, you know, rehabilitating in their community and at home, and making sure that they have the support and resources to do that. I think there's also the other hand to make sure that our law enforcement feels that they have the ability to engage with people and make sure that the rest of the community is safe as well. So, but I hear your, mental health is a huge priority.
Thank you, Zach.
Anyone else? All right, well, it's great to see all of you, and I will turn it back over to Mike. Thank you.
Oh, we have a Zoom question.
I have a question from Melanie Kins. If all the articles pass, what is the rough guesstimate for our tax rate?
So that, that one is, that one's not for me. I will graciously hand it over to Mike.
Zach, Zach, go ahead. Come on, give us your best. Don't be afraid. Well, that might be a good segue to our next person of interest to speak, because...
Will you want to let Mike answer the question?
Oh, go ahead. Oh, no, you're good. You're good. I don't have the answer yet, we're, I just got the draft audit back, and I'm not convinced some of the numbers that I saw are accurate, so I don't want to speak on that right now. Typically, what happens is when the grand list goes up, tax rate can go down, but budgets are involved with that too, but I just have some concerns about some of the numbers I saw on the form, and I don't want to misspeak or misrepresent something. So that will be between now and town meet or voting. I've got a bunch of notes, I will make a recording that we can put out on Zoom to answer a lot of these questions that came up tonight, so just stay tuned. And another Zoom question.
And it's a Zoom comment. Mariessa from RSVP says, thank you to everyone for your continued support of RSVP and the Volunteer Center.
Very good, okay. And one more speaker before we defer to citizen comments, and that will be, oh, our representative on the Slate Valley Unified School Board.
Yes, I'm the only one here, Sue couldn't be here, I believe, and Tim Smith is no longer going to be on the board, he is not running, he's been on the board for twelve years, and we do have a write-in candidate who has put herself forward, if you look at Front Porch Forum, you might get some information there. I wanted to give a shout out, you're right there, hi, Erin, how are you? I want to put a shout out to Zach, he came to what we call our Slate Valley Community Forum, community group that we have, that meets, I believe, monthly, and it's just community members coming in to talk to administration or whoever's there, sometimes they have a topic that they organize, having our local legislators come, two weeks ago, I believe, two weeks ago, so to come in and chat with us, obviously because education is such a hot topic with what's going on in the state. We have another one of those on March seventeenth, if anybody is interested, where, will you be there again too? You'll be there, and last, I think Dave will be back, Weeks will be back, and Canfield was there, hopefully maybe some other ones, but we've been inviting them and they've been very responsive, which has been, I've been on the board fifteen years, and this is the first time I've sat in a room with all of them, so it's been wonderful to have you guys do that, so we appreciate it. I have our report, it is online, it's literally on the front page and it's a flipbook, if you want a physical report, I'm gonna put a clipboard out there, I'm happy to PDF it to you, because I have the PDF version, but printing it, twenty-nine thousand dollars you guys spend on printing your town, part of your printing your town, it's something that we just don't do anymore, we don't print a lot of them, but it is available online. We have our meeting next Monday, so this is a flip-flop from what usually happens, usually we have our meeting, then town meeting, we have our meeting next Monday at the high school at six-thirty as well in the band room. So it'd be great if people would come and listen to the school report. We, again, also, just like the town, do not have all our specific numbers, the state doesn't set the yield, I'm not gonna explain it, guys, if you want me to, I will, but does not set the yield, which is what is the divisible number to get your tax rate, they do not set that till the end of the term. So we get an estimate as we go through this process, so you'll see that we have estimates in there for what the tax rates will be. The estimate is a decrease for the most, and the highest increase is less than a penny. That tells you guys anything, so we're kind of holding steady there. Does anybody have any questions they want to ask me? Because seriously, you guys, throw them at me, I don't mind, I know it's a hot topic, I know this is really tough place to be, I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you guys have before our meeting. If you don't feel comfortable asking them here, I'm more than happy to stay after and talk, but I've been doing this a long time, and I can more than happy to share information. I could talk about the elephant in the room, which is the superintendent's salary. Anybody? 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 I mean, I could, but Joe, if you'd like to ask a question, that'd be great.
Yeah, I have a question, and, and it gets to this issue with respect to the tax rate versus spending increases, and there's a total disconnect between the two. And when you look at the school budget of the last two years, what taxpayers are most upset about are these extraordinary increases in expenses, and even this year, you're asking for another increase in spending, and you're saying the tax rate's gonna go down. It's a total disconnect.
I agree.
And, and what people are most upset about is not the tax rate, it's what they believe is extraordinary levels of expenses.
Yeah.
So how do you reconcile that?
Yep.
As a, as a taxpayer, how do we reconcile that?
Yeah, I think similar to the conversations we've heard tonight from the board, when they're talking about insurance has gone up, wages have gone up, we can't keep people because we don't, we can't pay them enough to be, you know, competitive within the market, right? A lot of the similar conversations, I'm taking notes as I'm listening to them, going, that's exactly what we talked about at our board, the challenges that come with it. Almost the entire percentage of our increase is wages and benefits. You all know how, well, you might not all know, how our healthcare benefits are now one hundred percent out of our control, they're negotiated by the state, and when I say one hundred percent, I'm even talking about the percentage that comes out of their paycheck. So it's not like something that we even do in negotiations with our teachers' union is talk about that. And that used to be a big back and forth that we would be able to do as a school board, right? Wages versus healthcare, percentage taken out. We have zero control over healthcare anymore, we are given an amount, and that is what we are required to pay. So the only thing that we have control over right now is the percentage increase, and that's again through negotiation. Locally here in Rutland County, the two, well, Rutland County and Addison County, the two school districts that have settled their contracts with their teachers, Mill River Teachers settled for a ten percent increase next year. I'm setting the stage, guys, I'm just, I'm being honest with you, Middlebury, seven percent, okay? So, and here at VTSU, we settled for our non-faculty at five percent for this year. So I'm, I'm setting the stage, which is the stage that we have to look at and we have to deal with, and we're also negotiating. The second thing is, Rutland Superintendent Bill Olson was making a hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars last year, and he's, for this year, and he's retiring. They hired their new superintendent, an internal candidate with zero years' experience, at a hundred ninety-three thousand. So I'm letting you, I'm just explaining to you that when, when, you know, the, the conversation is about cost, we're not, we're not excessive, we're not out of step with what's happening in our community and in our area. As a matter of fact, we are still in the bottom part of spending per student, we're still under twelve thousand dollars. We were eleven thousand two hundred last year, we're eleven thousand seven hundred now, that's what we're proposing. Five hundred dollars more per student, and that covers wages, benefits, increases in pay, so we're being as reasonable as we can possibly be with the actual facts that we are given. And when we budget at Slate Valley, we start at zero. We don't start with, hey, principal, what did you spend last year? Tell us what you'd like different, no. Start with zero and build up. Start with zero and build up. Tell us what you need now, what's going on with what's happening now. And so that's a different, that's a different way to budget than some places. So we work really hard to be reasonable and to stay in step with what's happening in our county. As Zach was saying, there could be some changes coming down the pipe. I believe there's gonna be a compromise from the extreme, from the governor, to what is actually going to happen. I believe that compromise is gonna come down to this county. That's my, that's my belief. This county will be asked to do some consolidation. Where do we want Slate Valley to stand? What, what, what part do we want to play in a consolidation of this county? I want us to be strong. I want us to be ready. I want us to be competitive. I want us to be a school that's left standing at the end of this. And so that's also an honest conversation that we have as board members about what do we want, what do we want to look like? What do we want to be doing? So yes, we're asking for an increase, just like the town is asking for an increase. Because just as all of our bills have increased, the, the school district is not immune to the increases in their area and the increases in the community. So, Sue, have a question.
Well, you know, the question is consolidation. First of all, we're a very small district, you know?
We're the second largest in Rutland County.
Yeah, but we're a small, we're a small...
We are small. We are small.
We have 2,000 ninth through 12th graders in Rutland County.
That is correct.
And we have nine high schools. You know, so the reality is this, I think, don't you, somewhat? We have, we have two schools that probably could hold all our elementary kids. But we have four elementary schools open, you know? And I think it, I don't know, Julie, if you guys must have talked about it, is there's something about, you know, wanting your community school, you know what I mean? But then there's the reality of saying, can we really provide the program, the robust program we need for 300 kids? Or would it be better to have 600 kids together, you know? So I feel like some of our costs are the fact that we have our schools open, and we have administrators at all those schools
Yep.
and with your, and small numbers.
We are at the mercy of our structure.
Yep.
We're at the mercy of our structure. We have a high school. We moved our middle school into that high school. Allowed you guys to have the village school as a rec, we have a beautiful rec place now. But that's only happened here in Castleton. We still have the same makeup in all the other towns that we've had for years. And so we are at the mercy of that, right? And so that is difficult. And when you look at the size of our buildings, like you take Orwell and Benson right now, which everybody thinks, oh, Orwell and Benson, put them together. Neither building can hold all the kids. Neither building is big enough. Do you build a new building to get out of your structure, right? So, right? Or do you offer them choice? Do, so there's so, I think that, that because our communities feel so strongly about their schools, that the guidance in the force is gonna have to come from up above, not from below. And so the compromise that's gonna have to happen at the state level is going to hopefully change our structure. And we won't be at the mercy of the structure that we're at right now. And so that's, that's, I mean, we have these conversations. These are not, we, we know. We're not, we're not immune to this. We don't hide it. We talk about it. But we are at the mercy of our structure. We are at the mercy of what's happening in our communities to stay competitive. We still have positions we've never filled this whole year. We wrote them out of the budget because we didn't fill a special educator for a year. What, I mean, if you can't fill it, you can't fill it, right? There's a teaching crisis. I wrote a thing that'll be in the Lakeside News. In 1970, 21% of all degrees conferred were in education. In 2022, 4% were in education. We're in a crisis of people too. We're in a crisis of people. So there's just all these things coming together. So I honestly, I understand, Joe. It's, 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 it's a disconnect, right? 100% it's a disconnect, just like the CLA creates a, an interesting shift to our tax rate, right? But we are at the mercy of the structure that we're at, and we're at the mercy of what's happening in our communities and what's happening in the nation when it comes to the shortage of teachers and education. So we're doing the best we can with what we have, but you will, you will not find in our budget areas that we just increased from last year. It's all wages and benefits. There's nothing we can do. And you have to budget for your assumed benefits for the next year if you're in negotiation, right? So you have to pretend that you know what's gonna happen. So that's another challenge.
Okay. Very good. Yes, we could be here for hours discussing this.
But if, seriously, I do have the PDF. If you want an email of the PDF of our report before next Monday so you can look at it or email me questions, please feel free to do so. I'll put a clipboard out on the table.
Just one more thing.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you for your 15 years.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Moving on to the most fun part of the evening. I'm gonna open the floor up to everybody and Zoom as well. Citizens' concerns. Any questions, comments, concerns about how things are going in town? Now's your chance. If you want to go home and not say anything, that's fine too.
This is my last time. I just, I just want to thank Mark for the point he brought up about changing the culture. You know, with the recreation program, having more things. When you change the cultural opportunities, you do change kids. And so I really had wanted to say thank you to the Rec, the Rec Commission, the Friends of Rec, the people volunteering, you know, to really, yeah, care about the old people, but care about kids. And if we want our kids to be healthy, we've gotta have offerings for them. So anyway, thanks, Mark. I thought that was a good point.
Joe?
Not concerned, I just want to thank the Select Board and the Town Manager for the new sidewalk from the corners.
To Parson Hill. I think that's a much-needed addition to the town, especially for the folks who live in that area. And I use it when I walk to the center. All right. That being said, I move to adjourn this meeting. Oh, oh, wait. Okay.
Oh, thank you.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. Julie already introduced me, but I'm Erin Beldon, and I'm running for the Castleton School Board. I have some interesting experience. I've been working for a company called Revolution Prep for the last five years. It's a remote company out of California, and we service students internationally. So it was really cool. I'd wake up at 5:00 AM and start my day with a student in Bali working on APUSH or a student in Australia at 6:00 AM working on SATs. So I have a lot of experience working with a broad spectrum of students. And I'm really excited to apply what I've learned locally and just learn a lot. I'm not an expert on budgets or taxes, but I'm hoping over the three years that the term exists, I will hopefully become an expert by the end of it so that way I can see my future generations thrive and all of your future generations thrive as well.
So you gotta do a write-in for Erin because she missed the deadline because she didn't know about running. So she missed the deadline for petitions. You have to write her name in.
Erin Beldon. Erin Beldon.
So J-U-S-T-I-N. All right. Mike Jones. I was gonna close, so is there anybody that... I don't think we have any other citizens' comments. Oh, we have some from Zoom.
Josie Lishaw says, "Thank you very much for offering this virtually and recording it for others who not attend in person. Very much appreciated."
Excellent.
That's why we did it early. Get it ahead of everybody. Get it out to everybody.
It's gonna take a couple of days. I'm not sure about PEG, how, how long it'll take before they're out there, but two days from now, the one for the Zoom I'll have out there for public consumption. But I do want to take the time to thank Vermont State University at Castleton for hosting us here and to Lori Phillips for her help organizing it. Stefan Phillips up back, and he's got two volunteer students. Boom setup, audiovisual stuff. Thank you very much for the second year. And for PEG TV for also being here and... You're everywhere. Don't that guy, Mr. Deeds, just like show up behind somebody? Ooh! Very good. But thank you, everybody. More to follow on these questions. I'll answer questions and get it back out there for the public to, to read or watch. I finally get to swing my gavel. I move to adjourn.